Yes, and I love that Zoom reminds us of that every time. So we are recording this meeting. So you can share this. This will be in our YouTube channel. We will have this forever on YouTube. So if you want to share it with your friends, if you have any questions that you want to go back to, you can. All of our audience members are muted. Hence, we had all these questions come to us in advance. But feel free to use the chat box. However, if some of these overarching themes, you still have another deeper question that maybe we're not going to be able to cover tonight because we do have a very fast paced agenda. Feel free to put questions in the chat and then candidates as you have a moment. Feel free to answer those questions when you can. So we can use that chat box for some more interaction with our audience. So we hope to do this live and in person next year or the next time this happens. So I want to let you know that board elections are held on Tuesday, November 2. There are three seats on the ballot. We have seven candidates that are vying for three seats. And that is because three incumbents chose not to run. So we are excited about just digging in and going to our first question. So we're excited to ask, we're going to start alphabetical to begin with. And that would be Mark Brown and Mark and all the other candidates. Our first question is, what inspired you to run? And what are your two most important issues that influenced that decision?
Okay, so everyone here, my name is Mark Brown. I'm happy to be here and happy to be running through the school board election this year. A little bit of background for me because I thought we were going to go through a bit of opening remarks and tell everybody about ourselves. So I'm just going to give a brief introduction as to who I am. I graduated from Valley High School in 1990 and went west over to California for my undergraduate degree at Berkeley. And from there, I kept going west and went to live in Tokyo for 15 years. Back in 2009, I returned to this district. Both of my parents had Parkinson's at the time and they needed a little extra help at home. And I thought it'd be a good opportunity for my kids to learn native English as opposed to just English from their father. They could hear and speak English much better if they had a surrounding environment of English speakers. So those two reasons compelled me that my family moved back here to the district. I'd always been proud to tell my wife how great our district was as opposed to other states and other areas that didn't have such a great public education as Iowa's did. Because when I left, Iowa was ranking and always vying with Wisconsin for the number one spot in public education. And so I always held that close to my chest and I was very proud of that fact and was happy to move back to Iowa to have our kids enroll in the district as well. Back in 2010, we started learning about what had happened in the past 20 years since I had left the district. A lot of changes had made. The district was not, was no longer vying for the top spot in the nation for public education. We had fallen quite a bit. I think last count, we were down now to the middle part of the area of number 24 in the nation as a state terms in terms of public education. That was concerning to me, but also concerning to me was how the fact that we were spending money and efforts on things that had a little bit to do with education and matriculation for our children. It seems to be putting more and more focus on tangential things like sports or social agenda items and less has to do with now with education. We are now to the point where our kids are graduating with maybe one in four children not being proficient in their level of math or reading. And that's a topic we need to foremost do top choices and the reasons I chose to run here. Child safety and child education. And those are my two main focuses and two main goals. To see if I can do something with the board and make this district, one of the top districts again in the nation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mark, for your comments. And thank you reminding me, everybody gets about two minutes here for their opening statement comments, a little bit about you. So I know it's a lot to cover in two minutes. You did a wonderful job. Thank you, Mark. All right, we're excited to learn from Fannett Elliott. So Fannett.
Hello, everyone. I'm actually using my iPhone. So I hope you're able to hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, perfect. My name is Fannett Elliott. I was born in West Des Moines, raised in Des Moines, came back home to West Des Moines. But I entered from school at Phoenix. And then we moved to Des Moines. Educated in Des Moines Public School System. Upon graduation, I went to Iowa State University, the first of my family to graduate from college. I'm a fine, I'm graduating from Iowa State. I'm went to retail, went to management. I currently work for Mercer. I am going to say who I work for because I'm proud that I've been there for 22 years. I am the mid-market communications leader. Why am I running for school board? It kind of ties into where are the two reasons that you're running for school board? I went to confidently commit to assuring that the benefits of the Western Moines historic world-class public education is for all members of our diverse community. And when I'm talking about diverse community, I'm talking about students, parents, teachers, staff, residents and business leaders. Another big concern of mine is to support the teachers and administration and their ongoing dedication to fulfilling every student's potential so that they can prepare for an increasingly complex future.
Thank you, Fannett. Thank you so much. Very, very nice. Thank you. All right, we're excited to hear from Will Jess.
Hello, everyone. Will Jess. I'm a 39-year resident of West Des Moines. If you subtract the 12 years I had to live in Beavardale for a while, but I've always been here, always been home, West Des Moines. Went to Ex Mathis, went to Stillwell, graduated Valley class of 94. Go Tigers. I have beautiful wife. I have four kids, three in Jordan Creek, one at Stillwell. I've worked for the city for the last 16 years as a member of the fire department. And it just felt over the last couple of years that the next kind of layer to dedicating to the city and to my home is to see what I can do to help the school district. We've got strengths, we've got weaknesses, we've got some problems. I would like to see what I can offer to shore up some of the things that we're missing. The two big things that bother me and that brought me into this was the fact that it just seems like parents and teachers have been completely cut out of the decision-making process. And I would like to see if I can't restore their place in the system. A little more balance in the system, a little more checks and balances in the system. I think everything works best when we're all finding that middle ground. We're all talking about what the issues are. And instead of debating things, if we can just sit at a table and say, all right, let's find the solutions. And I think that comes from the parents and that comes from the teachers primarily because let's face it, they are the primary determinants of innovation. They know the kids the best, they know the kids the closest. So those are the things that I just want to see if I can help out with. Bring that balance, get rid of some of the divisiveness, see if we can fix that. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Thank you so much for your wonderful comments. Appreciate it. Okay, I'm excited to introduce Anna Delia Morgan. Did I pronounce your name right?
Good job. Yes, thank you. Hi, I'm Anna Delia Morgan. I'd like to start by thanking the organizers for giving us the opportunity to share our ideas this evening. I am a graduate of the University of Nebraska at Omaha. We are a military family and have lived in West Des Moines for almost five years. This is my children's fourth school district. We did spend three of those years in South Korea. We chose West Des Moines because of the quality public education that the district offers. I do have two children in the district. They're tri-racial and tri-cultural. One is in middle school and one is in high school, freshman at the high school. I have experience in grant management, community and leadership building, fundraising service, serving on various executive boards, event coordinating and management, and most importantly, serving my community. Being a stay-at-home mom has given me the privilege to be involved in every aspect of my children's education and extracurricular activities. I directed the West Ridge Elementary Schools musical for two years. I volunteer for various school needs for lunchroom to chaperoning field trips or special events. I am a member of the West Des Moines School Improvement Advisory Committee and one of the founders of the West Des Moines Community Schools, Families of Students of Color Support Group, and plan to support and advocate for other support groups in the district. I also continue to serve a religious education leader at my church. I am running for school board because like everyone here, I care about public education. I want to provide all families and students in our district a voice in our school community, especially families that are underrepresented. I want to continue supporting teachers, staff and administrators in addressing these concerns. And I want to have a seat at the table to be able to resolve and face these issues. I am invested in promoting understanding and strengthening unity in our district. I want all our kids to feel safe in their educational school environment. And I want the opportunity to provide perspectives from a different lens to help achieve district goals. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you very, very much. I'm excited to introduce Casey Schwartz. Casey Schwartz, there we go. I said it right.
You got it. Thank you very much. Thank you to everyone for taking the time and being here and for the organizers as well. This is a great opportunity to hear from all of us and for us to answer your questions as well. And so I grew up in Mason City, Iowa. I got my undergrad at the University of Northern Iowa and my masters in business from Drake University here in Des Moines. I've lived in West Des Moines since 2009 with my husband. And we have two kids in the district, both at Jordan Creek Elementary, a third grader and a first grader. And I'm running for the school board because, you know, as a parent, in the last 18 months, we've all been through the wringer, right? Everyone collectively in the community and the world. And I've gained such a new appreciation for our teachers, watching them, you know, endure through the challenges that they've been faced with the last year and a half as well as empathy for the kids and what they've been through. And as a parent, you know, before COVID happened and all of the accommodations we had to make, you know, my kids went to a good school and they were doing well. And aside from that, as a parent, I really wasn't very engaged with the school board or things that were happening in our district. And so for me, I really want to be a champion for many parents like me in the community, building, helping to build that bridge between parents and the school board and the district to make sure that as parents, we understand our responsibility and how we can help our teachers in our district and making our kids' education as successful as possible. And also a focus on academics. You know, Mark mentioned in his opening statements that, you know, in the early 90s, Iowa was, you know, one or two nationally in education. And we've really slipped in the last 25 years. And as a district, we're seeing that same decline as well. And so making sure that every single student is proficient at grade level, especially in reading and math where we're suffering today. I want to make sure that we're focusing on the core academics. And I know you said top two, but I'm going to mention my third because it's being an advocate for teachers. I mentioned not having the empathy and understanding for what our educators go through. And I'm learning, drinking through a fire hose every single day. And I want to make sure that, you know, we understand their challenges and where we have opportunities and that we are doing everything that we can to attract and retain top talented teachers ultimately for our kids to have the best education possible. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Casey. Really appreciate it. All right, we're excited to hear from Aaron Sewell. Aaron.
Hello, everybody. Real excited to be here. I'm actually in the middle of parent-teacher conferences myself. So I'll start with saying I teach fourth grade up in Ankeny, Ankeny schools. They snatched me up after my time working in West Des Moines. But I grew up in Kansas City, Missouri, graduated Simpson College, played football there. Ended up, you know, someone, a teacher from West Des Moines went, you know, you're good with, you're good with students, you're good with kids. Have you ever considered being a full-time teacher? And I thought, no one's ever told me that. And I realized I enjoyed, you know, working with kids and youth and students. And I started my journey in about 2015 of going to Iowa State to get my teaching degree. So got that degree, spent time subbing in West Des Moines kindergarten through high school, trigonometry, all sorts of classes and just getting into Valley High School and getting into the Crestview School of Inqory and Western Hills. And my wife was an associate at West Ridge at one time, spending time working one-on-one with students who needed that help. And we both looked at each other and we both, my wife and I, we go, how we get into, how we both get into education? I was a poly-sci major, she was a photography. And we both just laughed because, you know, we have a passion for working with kids and students and youth. And there's a lot of hard days, plenty of hard days, plenty of weekends where educators are working their tails off to try and prepare lessons and try to individualize everything and try to make meaningful learning. But it's worth it, you know? I'm running because same reason I became a teacher. I want to help kids. I want this to be the best school district for everyone to feel welcome in, regardless of the ability, background, where they're from. I want to partner with parents. We know we move, we work better when we move forward together. So the school board we have, we need good leaders, we need people who want to partner with those parents because those parents know those kids best and know how we can help reach them and provide success for individual students.
Thank you, Aaron. Thank you for your comments. All right, we are excited to hear from Lila Starr. Lila. Looks like you're still muted.
Sorry, my unmute wasn't working right.
You're good.
On my phone. Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the organizers at West Des Moines Chamber of Commerce. I'm Lila P. Montoya Starr, and I'm running for school board. I've lived in Clive since 1997. I'm the parent of two twice exceptional young men, both of whom attended K through 12 in the West Des Moines schools, graduating in 2011 and 2015. As a parent, I was an ever-present advocate for their individualized educational needs. And both of my children qualified for enrichment due to giftedness, but they also qualified for accommodations due to disabilities. I've worked for the Iowa Department of Human Services as a social worker for the past 37 years. And I have 13-plus years in child protective treatment in the Iowa system. And I have been for the last 22-plus years, a mental health specialist in the Division of Mental Health and Disability Services where I have served families, adults and older adults. I've been proud to be employed by the taxpayers and I have learned a great deal about being a good steward of taxpayer dollars. I've managed millions and millions of taxpayer dollars in my career. I've learned also a great deal about how to be an effective advocate for children, for families, for adults, older adults, and for people with disabilities. And I've served and I hope to continue serving in that capacity on the school board. I'm married to a Cuban immigrant, Tony Montoya, who's also a social worker with the Iowa Department of Human Services. I come from a long line of family members who've taught me the value of service to others. My parents were both social workers and educators as well as civil rights advocates. And they taught me the importance of civic engagement, how to be inclusive, how to think critically, how to listen to the perspectives of others, and hopefully how to serve my community really well through volunteerism. As a fellow public employee and IPRSS member, I'll be a steadfast advocate for teachers and staff of the district if I'm elected. I've been endorsed by the West Des Moines Education Association, which is the teachers' union, as well as my own union, APSME, and the IBEW and the South Central Federation of Labor. I look forward to hearing from community members this evening and from the other candidates throughout tonight's forum.
Thank you, Lila. Thank you, all the candidates. Fabulous, fabulous job. It's so great to get to know each of you. Okay, our next question is around mask mandates. This was our most popular question and we probably received 20 questions relating and in lots of different ways. But let's just open it up from a global perspective. You know, where do you stand on mask mandates? We have about one minute for each of our candidates to answer this question. And if you want to elaborate, absolutely feel free. And we're going to start. We've been going alphabetical, we'll continue that, but now we're going to start with Fannett Elliott. So we're going to rotate around a little bit. So Fannett, where do you stand on mask mandates?
First confirm that you can hear me.
Yes.
I'm on my phone.
Perfect.
Okay, I believe in science. I believe in the science. And I think just by making that statement, everyone can kind of come to their own conclusions. But I'm concerned about the safety of the children. I'm concerned about the safety of the teachers. I'm concerned about everyone. The way that I look at this is that in order to enroll in any elementary school, middle school or high school, one of the things that you have to produce is an immunization record. You cannot enter school without having shots in your immunization record. So when I look at the concern, I'm concerned about everyone's safety. If you can enter the school and cannot enter the school, if you haven't had your measles or your red bella shots, I see what's going on right now. I equate it the same. Bottom line, you should be concerned about the next person next to you, the teacher, the administrator, everyone. So yes, I firmly believe in science and I firmly believe in the need to mask.
Thank you, Fannett. Thank you, Fannett. Same question, Will Jess. Where, what is your stance on mask mandates?
Well, to answer that, I think what I would look at is, this is what I would have liked to have seen done with the district. I would like to have seen them provide every bit of information, educational materials to every parent, every child, every staff member to educate them on what they can do, their options to protect themselves from an infectious disease. And encourage everybody to educate themselves and make the materials easy to understand. And then leave it to the individual to make the best choice for themselves and for their family. And leave it at that. I think it's the district's job to educate, not to mandate.
Thank you, Will. Thank you. Thank you very much. Anna Delia Morgan, what's your stance?
Oh, trying to unmute. So having a community mindset means that we do small sacrifices for the good of our community. Again, being a military family, when I walk beside my husband wearing a uniform, many people throughout the community have come up to him and say, thank you for your service. So with that in mind, I thought part of doing a service is wearing a mask for those that are vulnerable, for those that are immune compromised. And again, remembering that we need to take care of our community. I personally feel that it is a small sacrifice. And my children, living in South Korea, we, our children wore masks. My son would wear masks pre-school on days that were, that were, the air was a little more polluted or they were asked to wear a mask if they were ill. And that's one of the things that we took back from, from, from living there. And we really appreciated that type of mindset.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Casey Schwartz.
I believe that COVID is definitely serious and we've seen that it affects different people quite differently. I believe in science, of course, and science is always evolving and changing. And, you know, community education is always critically important in this way in terms of making sure that we understand what healthy behaviors look like. You know, hand washing, staying home when you don't feel well. And ultimately, masks are technically a medical intervention. And medical interventions are always individual decisions. And parents need to work with their doctors and consult with each other within their family to make the best decisions for their family.
Thank you. Thank you. We want to ask all of our attendees to have respect for all of our candidates and our listeners. And we will eject people that are not respectful. We want to have this to be an open, honest conversation. And we want this to be a loving conversation, no matter what the opinion. So I do ask everybody to be mature about this conversation. We really, really appreciate that. We want to give the respect that we can and that these folks are due. So I really appreciate that very much. Thank you, Casey, for your comments. Aaron Sewell, we'd like to hear from you.
Yeah, just would like to reiterate, let's do our best to give every candidate a chance to present themselves. You know, we want to, we want to learn from each other. Interrupting is not helpful. So to get to my answer, if, if as a teacher in the classroom, you know, it sucks wearing masks. The kids don't like wearing masks, but parents, I've seen parents have come to accept it as a thing. It's a, it's a new normal. It's a weird normal. Everyone looks forward to a day where it's like we wore masks once. That's weird. If it saves one child from critical injury or death, then we have to ask, is it's worth it, isn't it? If a child dies on our school board's teachers, whoever's watch, and we had the chance to save that child, we can easily trace it to a classroom, then we'll be left wondering questions, could we have done more? Should we have done more? And without more options for prevention out there, safe vaccines and other prevention techniques, masks seem to be the best short-term answer we have until we can come up with those more safety measures. It's great to see child numbers going down, hospital hospitalizations are at 2% for people under 18. That's awesome to see, but we still got to make sure until we have as many safety measures as possible as an option for families who want that option. Then we need to make sure that as leaders, we're doing everything we can for every student to have an opportunity to learn to be safe.
Thank you, Aaron. Thank you. And Lila Starr.
Hi, everybody. I also believe in the science. I believe we need to follow the guidance that's given to us from the federal level and from, from national and international health experts. I believe that's what the West Des Moines current members of the West Des Moines School Board were doing when they unanimously passed a mask requirement, once the legal roadblock was cleared. I also think it's really important to note that when the school, current school board passed that mask requirement that went into effect in September, that they did so in lieu of the legal advice that came from their law experts here in the district. The, the decision that overruled, at least temporarily, the governor's ban on mask requirements came out of the Americans with Disabilities Act. You may remember, I mentioned earlier, I'm a disability advocate as my profession. And I really believe that the district would have been opening themselves up to do liability and frankly lawsuits from the parents and families of children with disabilities had they not instituted the mask requirement that they have done. And so many other districts in Iowa have followed suit. So I'm on board with that. I believe we have to follow the science. And I, I believe we all need to remember that for generations now, mitigation efforts have been required as part of going to school. We all got vaccinated as children to various diseases so that we could attend school and protect members of our community. And that's what we have to continue doing at this time.
Thank you, Lila. I really appreciate us having this conversation and, and being, you know, very open about this. And I just really appreciate our audience too, being respectful. And, and, and so thank you for keeping the respect going. Okay, we have another question. And this time we're going to start with Will Jess and, oh.
Do I get a chance to answer the question?
Mark Brown, I apologize. Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Okay, thank you, everybody. All right. Thank you, Mark. What's your stance on the mask mandates?
Thank you very much. I am pro-personal choice. I think the parents have the ultimate say in whether their child has to wear a mask or not, get a vaccine or not. That is a personal choice for the parents to decide. I also believe our staff and faculty are adult enough now that they can make a decision for themselves, how best to handle their own personal health. We now have several therapeutic options available. There have been many reports as well that contradict what the There have been many reports as well that contradict what the quote is the science. And so therefore it needs to be out in the open and that discussion needs to be had about what is actually going on with the vaccines and the masks and so on and so forth. I'd be happy for anybody that wants to know, there's a report on the NIH website which thoroughly describes what happens even within 30 minutes of wearing a mask. It's very significant about the amount of oxygen blood level, levels declining in the blood. And beyond that, there are many other studies that this report refers to that have been done prior to this COVID instance. Another thing I want to bring up is the fact that the state of Iowa passed a law that says you cannot mandate the masks. And as soon as the judge granted an injunction against that law, our district went and celebrated by requiring all kids to be remuzzled, masked up again. That is not the way to handle this. There are much more adult ways to go about this and to, as Jess, as Will said, we can talk to the parents and talk to this community about what the ramifications of each are and let the decision be made by the parents and the staff. I don't believe we need to go through another mandate. And this is just really a sad state of affairs that we're in because we shouldn't be having this discussion at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, everybody, again. All right, for the next question, we have a minute to answer. And Bailey, thank you for helping everybody keep track of their time. I really appreciate that a lot. So Bailey's our, our timekeeper. So this question more deals with school funding. And, and a broad question, what are your thoughts on state funding for schools? And what do you think the future looks like in this area? And we're going to start this time with, let's see, Fennett Elliott? Nope, Will Jess. There we go. We're going to rotate. Here we go. Help me keep track. All right, Will Jess.
Well, on this one, this one's out of my educational range. I'm just an average guy, like I said, kind of just a regular dude in the community that sees kind of bigger picture things. I'm kind of a dreamer. I'm kind of a visionary. I'm kind of an idealist. I'm a lot of an idealist. So if I'm elected and I get in there, that's when I've got to start learning on the fly about these specifics. So I'm not going to try and then blow any sunshine up on this. I, I don't have a good answer for you. I am fiscally responsible and I think that whatever the funding is, however it's supposed to be there by the experts that, that educate me, we're going to use it wisely to put towards education. That's the thing. If it doesn't directly affect education, then we probably are wasting our time a little bit. So again, kind of a crappy answer from a dude that doesn't know much, but thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Will. Thank you, Will. All right, Anna Delia Morgan. You are on mute. There you go.
Darn it. Can I have those five seconds back? Just kidding. No, I'm kidding. So I do realize that recruitment has been down in our schools. I think that we need to make sure that we are providing quality education by making sure that our teachers have quality pay. And that is how I think we continue to keep people into district and wanting to live in, in West Des Moines. And I really feel like the school budget needs to reflect the school's goals. I know that there is work that is, that is being done and I, I realized there was a budget cut. And we just need to make sure that we're supporting programs like STEAM, again, science, technology and the arts, and making sure that we're just taking care of the priorities of our teachers too.
Thank you. Thank you for your answer. Casey Schwartz.
I won't pretend to be an expert in this topic either, like Will said. But just from looking at the numbers, it seems as though we've done a decent job in funding the district. I know we did have a budget cut hit us recently, but I really question, you know, the allocation of funding. When you look at an investment around $12,000 per student and you look at a private school cost in the area of around $8,000 per student, we need to make sure that we understand exactly where all of those funds per student are allocated to. And then look at our proficiency rates, particularly in reading and math, and understand where might we be able to reallocate funds so that we can address those educational proficiency opportunities that we have.
Thank you, Casey. Thank you, Casey. Okay, Erin Sewell.
Yeah, it's important we practice fiscal responsibility. You know, looking at our plans ahead, it's hard to look now, you know, we have budgets set already. But looking at plans ahead, what are the programs, events coming up? You know, the things that matter to our classrooms, to our teachers? How can we fund those or what do we really need? Looking at priorities of our district, we want to make sure that our early literacy programs are funded. K through three has intervention for students to, you know, be strong readers. Because once they get past third grade, I teach fourth grade, I see this up in Ankeny. Once students get past third grade, if they're behind, they're stuck spinning their tires for a while. We want to make sure mental health is, is well-funded, you know, students have access to professionals, teachers have continued training and emotional and mental health awareness to take care of these kids and these youth going through so much. And we need to make sure that our, our teacher recruitment programs across the state are expanded. And we have good programs going on. Troops to teachers is one. You gotta make sure that they're, they have those opportunities and understand that they can play a role in shaping the future. And also the state establishing a budget deadline would be helpful. You know, so just ahead of schedule so schools know how much is they're going to have to spend when that year comes around and help working with legislatures on that funding formula with the students and, you know, comes back to how are we using it responsibly?
Thank you so much, Erin. Thank you. Lila Starr. Your answer.
Thanks for the question. I think it's important that we recognize and understand and know what we don't know. And certainly I didn't come to this race with a lot of pre-existing knowledge about how schools, schools are funded. I think as taxpayers, most of us don't know or think much about how schools are funded until that every other year or so, when we start hearing about the Iowa legislature dealing with whether they're going to give a percentage point or two to schools or not. So first thing I did when I decided to run for school board was to sit down with the superintendent, Lisa Remy. I asked her, what's, what should my learning curve look like? What should I do to begin to get acquainted with the things I need to know? And in particular, I said, how do you learn about school funding? She said Paul Bobek. He's the CFO for the school district. I sat down with Paul and he shared with me the budget, which is like, wow, this is a presentation that they gave in March. And he began to educate me, spent probably an hour and a half, hour and 45 minutes with me, beginning to give me the 101 about how schools are funded. I'm going to need to understand and know a great deal more about it than I do now. What I know so far is that our budget for this year is about $182 million for the district. There's a lot to learn. There's a lot to know. And I'm going to take it all in before I'm going to start making decisions about what needs to get cut or what needs to get added or how do we move this piece around and that piece around? And how does it affect the broader whole? And most importantly, how does it affect our students and their learning?
Thank you, Lila. Thank you. Mark Brown.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm fairly acquainted with the school budgeting process. One of my great uncles was the CFO for the Des Moines Public School, School District. And he took me aside one day and went line by line through the school budget and explained to me, because it was English, but I wasn't sure it was in English because it was all kinds of stuff. There were budget lines that could be used for this, other budget items that can be used for this and that. The general fund is the one fund that is abused because it can be used for everything. And that is the one that is probably, needs to be revamped the most. The one cent tax credit being applied to school funding of building construction and so on and so forth, that's something we can't really use much. That's only for, you know, ground repairs and ground facilities management. There are a lot of things that we need to do with the budget. 182 million, divide that by what, about 9,950 students? That's about 19,000 being spent every year per person, per child in the district. That's far and above where we were 30 years ago in spending. So we don't really have a money issue. We have a spending issue. We need to reallocate and revamp where the budget is going. We could be doing more things without giving our teachers more incentives to do a better job. There are things that we spend money on that are just ridiculous and we should be going through those item by item with the parents and the teachers sitting down together in a fair setting. So we can all work out what's best for the district and go forward with a capable of funding for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you. All right, Fennett Elliott.
I find this question very intriguing. And the reason being is because in the spring of this year, a committee of administrators, teachers, parents, guardians and community leaders was formed. And actually, the purpose was, yes, we did have to go through the exercise of cutting budgets, cutting the budget. It was very thought provoking to get 50 people to come together and make those decisions on where to cut. Anywhere, from, from my business experience, I have a marketing budget. I have to look at my expenses. And I also have to look at, I mean, everything in, in, in its totality. Anytime you're working with a budget, it's not fun. Anytime you're working with a budget, what is the biggest, that biggest expense for businesses and for schools is people. That I was honored to be part of, to understand how the budget, to understand how to make the cuts. Once I'm on the school board, I'm not going to go into it with any preconceived notion that we need to cut here, we need to add there. I'm going to go into it with an open mind to truly roll my sleeves up and understand, go to the next level. Because the exercise and experience that I went through was valuable. But now I have the opportunity to go dig a little bit deeper. But I think what everyone needs to realize though, when it comes to school funding, there has to be concern of what's going on at, at the legislature. That's where the source, if you're questioning, we need more money for this or we need more money over here. You really need to look at the legislature to see how the allocations are going. That then will allow the district to look at the budget and look at the funding. But I think there has to be a mindful eye of what's going on at the legislature.
Thank you, Fennett. Thank you. Okay, everybody has answered that question. Appreciate it very much. If we have time in the end, we will answer a little bit more specific question relating to that. But I want to move to diversity, equity and inclusion in the classroom. And how do we, we've got a lot of issues relating to diversity, equity, inclusion. There's even regarding transgender students and making students feel safe and comfortable in all areas of the school, including restrooms and locker facilities, but more generally, diversity, equity, inclusion, what are some of your thoughts around equality for all of our students, no matter where they come from? And we are going to start with Anna Delia Morgan for this question.
Hi, so just like I mentioned before, one of the reasons that I started getting more involved was my concern about diversity, equity and inclusion. And what does that really mean? So this year, in the last, well, this year, my, I really had been working on my personal bias and learning what my personal biases were. And I thought that, wow, I, I feel like I'm a good person. I see everybody. But eventually I realized that I really see everybody as, you know, like equally, but that's not the truth. I think everybody needs the opportunity to maybe be seen with a clean slate despite of their race, despite of their socioeconomic status, their sexuality, whatever it may be. Everybody deserves dignity. With that said, I think that West Des Moines Community Schools is heading in the right direction or is in the right direction by hiring a diversity and equity inclusion direct, director and making sure that they're taking the steps to make sure that all our students, especially the ones that are underrepresented, are being supported in these ways. I personally have experienced many microaggressions in this community. And it hasn't dampened my spirits. It hasn't, it actually has pushed me to want to make sure that I am representing all communities and would like to do that on the school board.
Thank you so much for your comments. And our next candidate is Casey Schwartz. We'll be reflecting on the same question. Diversity, equity, inclusion. What does that mean to you and, and how would you like to make a difference?
Yeah, that's a great question, a really important topic. And, you know, what I would say is that I think we need to celebrate our differences and work to make sure that we're providing an environment where every single kid and everyone can succeed and be treated with dignity and respect. And it's necessary and positive to make sure we're teaching about history and historical events to ensure that we have facts and context and we can build empathy to move forward and to lift all boats, to use that analogy. We need to realize we're all different. We have different backgrounds and that's what makes us better, enables us to learn from each other. And just making sure that we're providing an environment where kids feel welcome and have the ability to grow and thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Thank you so much. Erin Sewell, same question.
I've, I've worked with students. I've, you know, I've taught seven years, three years as a substitute, four years full-time. I've had students who have been gay, identified as gay, lesbian in my classroom. I've worked with students from, from minority backgrounds. I've worked with white students from poor backgrounds. I've worked with students with abilities from, and disabilities from different backgrounds. There are so many challenges that these kids face, so many things. When they come to school, they just want to know their love. They just want to know they have a welcome environment. They just want to know that they can participate with their peers and make friends and have friends and feel safe. You know, they want teachers who care about them. They want to be in, their parents want to know they're in a system that they can find their own success. And my two-year-old daughter, when she gets in this, in the, in the West Des Moines schools, I want her to know that she's in an environment that she can contribute to being a part of the solution. That she knows that there's teachers that her friends can rely on when they need help. You know, I go through Walmart sometimes in the, in the Windsor Heights area, late at night. I'm just doing a quick errand and I see families, you know, from different backgrounds with their kids there late at night. I'm like, man, what is their story? You know, what, do their parents work two jobs? You know, poverty doesn't see race, color or background. But there's so much, when it comes to inclusion and diversity that we all bring to the table that we all need to remember and consider and just make sure we move forward together. You know, that's how the school board does it by partnering with parents and going out there in the community and make sure we're listening. So.
Thank you, Erin. Thank you for your comments. Lila Starr.
Well, I certainly want to echo comments made previously. I think that one of the most important things we can impart to our children as they get their education is how to be good citizens of the world as they grow up. I mentioned earlier that I had parents who really role modeled for me and were civil rights advocates. My father was at the March on Washington with Martin Luther King, August 28th, 1964. One of the proudest things, we as a family like to hold out to the world and say, you know, talk about role models. I, I had an ideal role model in my parents because they modeled for me that we need to be about bringing social justice, equality, diversity in everything we do and that we need to look at people as people that we embrace, people that we cherish. And we need to try to do everything we can to level the playing field for those who may not have as many advantages as we do, for those who are in different socioeconomic situations. For those who have disabilities for whom the educational playing field needs to be leveled. I want to be about all of that and I certainly hope that we want to have a whole community of parents who want to be great role models to their children as we have teachers and administrators who want to be great role models for our kids.
Thank you, Lila. Thank you for your comments. Mark Brown. Mark Brown, same question. You're on mute, Mark. Yep, it's okay.
Good catch. Thank you.
There you go.
I'm for all of our students being pushed to their best that they can be. Through education that makes sense for all of our students. Right now, we have a core issue problem in the district. We are one of the worst offenders when it comes to. Math and reading comprehension scores in the in the greater metro area. We're just beneath or just above Des Moines Independent School District right now. And right now, we have a big problem in getting our kids just to read and write and do arithmetic. We have. So many problems just to focus on that before we can get to. Racial agenda or social agenda items that I think it's really important that we sit down and. Put our minds to getting this district to where it needs to be. And that means getting. Our heads wrapped around where we're failing in the curriculum, where we're failing our students. Why they cannot read beyond the third or fourth or fifth grade level at some times when they get past high school. We need to be able to get our kids to write legible sentences. Try getting three or four of our high school students to write a paragraph or two and have it make sense. You can be challenged to find that. We have a lot of issues to cover here. And racial equity transgender issues, that's. That's great, but we have other problems that are more pressing. Thank you.
Okay, Mark. Fannette Elliott, same question.
I think this question kind of parallels to one of the reasons why I'm running for school board. And one of the things is to restore the world-class public education that the West Des Moines District is known for. We are a global economy. We have a very diverse population. It is imperative that we instill in our children the ability to get along. Just because I may look a little different, doesn't mean that that changes my outlook. My thinking process, the way that I think, the way that I act. So diversity and inclusion is important because we need to prepare our students. As far as reading, writing and math. The interesting thing about that is the district is doing things. I have nieces and nephews that I'm raising in the West Des Moines schools. And I can tell you hands down, they are doing a wonderful job. What are some of the things that they're doing when it comes to reading? There's a. I want to say it correctly, back book in the bag program. What that does is that these students are identified right from kindergarten on. If they're not getting the assistance and the help that they need from their parents, the teachers are there to support them. There are programs that are helping them with their reading. As far as math, if you're identified as a student in need. The school district does have programs in hand where they are helping. So I happen to be proud of what is being done currently in this district. Not only for diversity and inclusion, but the things that I know for a fact that the district is doing to help the students. Who are maybe at risk as far as reading and writing.
Thank you for your comments. Will Jess, same question.
You know what? It's good to go last on this one because. Anadilia, Erin, you guys said it. You said it great. And I agree with you guys wholeheartedly in there. I find it tragic that in twenty twenty one. We're still having these these problems, these issues. That this is dialogues that we should have had and completed fifty years ago. So longer ago than that, let's face it. And having to focus so much to create these environments in these schools. Is taking away from our ability to properly educate. It is because we're having to devote that resource to making kids feel safe and we're having these arguments. We're divided about these things that should have been done. Fifty years ago. I don't have any grand solutions other than I know that it needs to change and we need to come together and we need to have meaningful dialogues. And. What can we do? Can we even be successful without addressing the root cause of the lack of empathy? If we're empathetic, then we don't need this. And how do you make a culture of empathy? How do you create it? How do you cultivate it? I would like to see us as a district be able to reach out more to the parents. Kids are going to learn the most from their parents. They are. They're going to learn to judge or not judge or see everybody as equal or act equal from their parents. So what can the district get out to educate parents? Not necessarily educate, but just, hey, let's become one. We are human beings. We all have the same feelings. We all have the same needs. Let's be one. Stop fighting this and get back to just educating kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Will, for your comments. Thank you. All right, deep breaths. We're ready for another question and we're going to take a little commercial break. I love that Lila Starr put in the chat and I'm going to read this for everybody to hear because it's a very great. Commercial break here for a moment. And she says, if you like what you're hearing from all the candidates today, want more information, please visit their websites, their Facebook pages. Support us, volunteer, right? They're knocking on doors, probably. They're hanging signs. They're doing all that that hard work of getting out into the community. And I can imagine what hard work that is, donations, etc. So I'm really appreciate you putting that on there, Lila. That's fabulous. So so, you know, learn more from these exceptional candidates. They're all incredible people doing great work. And you know what I love about America is we can all have different opinion, different opinions and it's okay, right? And this is just wonderful. I'm just really enjoying this a lot. So, all right, commercial break over. Okay, here we go. Next question. We're gonna, we got this a lot. And so the next question is. What is your stance candidates on critical race theory? Governor Reynolds sign a bill and so that is our next question. And now we are going first to Casey Schwartz to answer the question about critical race theory. What's your stance? Anything around that that you would wish to talk about? We would love to hear. Everybody has one minute to answer this question. Thank you, Casey.
So I read through that legislation word for word and I would say that that I agree with that legislation and the way that it was written. I absolutely, I mentioned this already, believe that we have to teach our kids and each other about what's happened in history. We can't leave out parts that we're not proud of, right? Because it's all part of how we got to where we are today. And so it's healthy and, you know, Will touched on, we need to cultivate a culture of empathy. Because that is really one of the root causes of how we got to where we are. And so. Teaching history absolutely provides us a pathway to building empathy and connections with each other. And again, our differences and our backgrounds are beautiful and something that we absolutely need to celebrate. We just need to make sure that we're doing it in a respectful way so that all kids and students and teachers and educators. Feel welcome and safe to be able to do that and to achieve academic success. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Thank you so much. Okay, our next person to answer that question is Erin Sewell.
Critical race theory. I've read, I've studied and studied this, different articles, news articles, articles from American Bar Association, articles from written by. Teaching professionals, just to make sure I really understood what this is about. And the more I read it, the more I see it's more of a way of thinking of. Considering how society has been affected by by history. And I love teaching social studies. I love just connecting things that has gone on to things that are going on to trying to figure out. Why the recent elections went the way they do. So critical race theory's goal and it's a higher level college law of thinking. Is to, it's just to consider what's going on in society that's affected by history. And we can see it through redlining during the civil rights era where banks were were literally drawing lines around poor populations. Of people who not alone give loans out to or give terrible deals out to. And it's like, well, that's a thing of the past. Well, in two thousand eighteen, there was reverse redlining where they were giving terrible deals out to them. Based on where people lived and it can affect anyone of any race, but usually it's people of certain minority populations in these areas. So just trying to take in consideration what's going on as in regards to school, we should be teaching, you know, as much history as we can. Columbus did a lot of bad things. He discovered America, discovered some places near America, but he did a lot of bad things. You know, we need to make sure we are learning about that kind of stuff and trying to not repeat our history. We also need to teach that we are a great nation. We have done terrible things. But we need to keep getting better and look forward and, you know, we've done a lot of great things too, you know, we need to learn from our past and try to be better tomorrow than we are today. In many areas and just try to lift each other up and support each other.
Thank you, Erin. Thank you so much. Okay, Lila Starr, again, what's your stance on critical race theory? We got a lot of people ask this question, so.
Thanks. So as Erin said, critical race theory is a college or graduate level curriculum that never was being taught in the West Des Moines schools. Never was being taught anywhere in America that I know of in a K through twelve curriculum. So when our legislature passed a law to say you can't teach critical race theory, it was very much. A solution in search of a problem that did not exist. So. Sadly, the phrase critical race theory has now become sort of this touch point that's that's become. Unfortunately energized. Through red versus blue and black versus white kind of conversation and it's it's just not appropriate. We need to teach history. We need to teach history accurately. We need to talk about our own history in ways that are truthful and that paint us. With our warts and all so that we can learn from our mistakes in the past and have our kids learn about history accurately.
Thank you, Lila. Thank you. Mark Brown.
Thank you. Critical race theory is a great topic to bring up because it involves more than just the school board or the staff. It should involve parents. And parents being deeply involved in what the kids are being taught. I would really appreciate a greater participation by the. Parents of the community overall in getting to a better understanding of what our kids are being taught in the district. I do know we have a state law that was passed on critical race theory banning that. And also know we now have staff among the district that seem to be skirting the law openly. And I think some of those people here know what I'm talking about. And I think it's another thing we need to discuss about is what happens when we have staff and faculty that seem to think they can just flaunt. What state laws have been passed. So I think this is a great topic. I don't think I'd be able to answer it and address it. Succinctly in thirty seconds, but in short, we need more parental involvement in what's going on with the district in our our education there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you very much. Fannette Elliott, your stance.
And the interesting thing, I really my hat's off to each and every person who has spoken. Because each and every person has touched upon things that go around in my mind all the time. I like what Aaron has said because he has addressed a part of that topic that is the history. As far as the making of our communities. Red line. That's something that still exists and still goes on. In order to make a better community, we do have to look at some of the things that we're doing. And it's not pointing out things that could be considered divisive or negative. It's pointing something out and then let's sit down, let's figure it out. What can we do to make things better? And I think that I'm not going to go deeply into this whole critical race theory. Because I I agree with what has been said by Lila. It's taught in the colleges, was never part of the Western curriculum. But what it has done is it has opened up dialogue. And that's really the most important part. Opening up dialogue, diversity of thought, diversity of opinions. And so that's a good thing. You know, it's just that we need to do more of it. There needs to be more opportunity for parents, for students, for teachers, for community leaders. To have those critical conversations, conversations in general. And I just want to end by saying those who forget history are destined to repeat it. Thank you.
Thank you, Fannette. Thank you. Will Jess, what is your stance on critical race theory?
Again, I gotta, I gotta hand it to Erin. I agree with a lot of what he's saying. He says it better than me, probably. I'm not that articulate when I speak. I feel that America as a concept is almost perfect. It's almost perfect as a concept in application specifically with our history, but still ongoing is deeply flawed. And that's due to many, many, many reasons. And I think the debates that we have on the CRT at this point are stemming from all of that. And I think that you have one side that's very frustrated. And has a valid reason to distrust the other side. And I think the other side is fearful of indoctrination. Whether that's there or not, it's a valid fear because we're not dialoguing, as we've said, both sides are not talking with each other and understanding each other. As I got into this, I started educating myself too. I read the dismantling racism workbook. And there's some fascinating, interesting topics in there that everybody needs to read. We need to understand. I think with the critical race theory and the teaching, if we're worried about it in schools. That's a valid worry on what we think about it. That, and I think the law that was passed was passed out, my interpretation anyway. Was passed to preserve the boundaries between teaching kids how to think and teaching them what to think. There's a difference. And I think when you start to blur that boundary, you get into some dangerous territories. And that's where we start to get some very divisive dialogues. So anything, it doesn't matter how controversial it is, if this is controversial, if it's anything else, shouldn't be censored necessarily. But we've got to watch that boundary. We've got to preserve that boundary and let the the kids make their own decisions. And yeah, just decide where it's supposed to be within a mandatory curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Thank you. Okay, Anadilia Morgan, critical race theory.
I was so happy to hear, you know, Will's answer and some of the other candidates as well, some of the things that I was going to touch upon too. You know, if you want to break boundaries and build community, we need to bring everybody to the table and communicate. So I did. Appreciate those comments about like coming to the table and having really honest and open conversations about what CRT really means. You know, this is a unique, took a difficult time for our students and they're dealing with issues that we didn't have to at their, at our, my age. You know, there is COVID leading to a lot of like mental health issues. There's polarization, access to social media. So our kids are educating themselves without parents, without the schools doing it. One friend, one of my daughter's friends said, I probably learned more from TikTok than I do at school. Not that saying anything about school, but it's it's how social media has impacted their lives. And CRT has been definitely politicized and I see it as seeing the world from a different lens. I believe that we just give the teachers the resources to educate our kids and prepare them to go out into the world. We need to provide students with factual information. That's it. Factual history, things that have that are happening around the world and teach them to be critical thinkers and make up their own mind about what that means. We need to provide more inclusive and diverse education, literature. And just like from other authors besides the the literature that they're getting now, because there are many people that help build America besides. A lot of people of color that have helped build America and we just need to make sure that we're educating our children that they know, again, factual information about the United States. And just again, the importance of building community. It's not enough to say we have a diverse community. We have to actually do the work and build those bridges so that we're we're united. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, we have just enough time for each of our candidates to. Thank you. Thank you. Well, we have just enough time for each of our candidates to reflect and have closing comments. And everybody will have two minutes, which is great. So if there are topics that you feel like we have not touched on, we have covered the majority of the major questions that came in through our email. But for these last two minutes that all of our candidates have, if there are some things that you feel really strongly, want to make sure that you get across to our audience here today, please feel free to do that. And we're excited to hear from everybody for two minutes more. And we're going to start where we started in the beginning. And we're going to start alphabetical like how we started our conversation, if that's okay with everybody. Excellent. Erin gave me the thumbs up. I love that. Okay, so Mark Brown, we're going to start with you. Two minutes for closing comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Just want to touch base again. I'm looking to focus mainly and most importantly, on child safety and child education. I think everything is ancillary to those two critical things. I'm a big supporter of getting our teachers also involved in this. I want to see them excel. I want to see them rewarded for being excellent teachers to our children, but I think we also need to make sure that our children are not threatened by gang violence, which we've seen spayed of in this district. I don't think we want our children exposed to being taught to think a certain way, as Will suggested. And I think that's a great point to make, Will, that our kids need to be taught to think critically for themselves. And that's exactly where I want us to go. I also do not appreciate the fact that of late, our school board has simply just been rubber stamping whatever the superintendent has put forth. I think there needs more diverse dialogue and more diverse breadth of opinion as to what goes past the school board and why. Our school board is supposed to be a representative factor of what is the overall community and the parents of the community and is doing things in the best interest for our children. One of the things I left, when I left this district was as I went on to Japan is I found myself one morning, late night, I was playing playing with a bunch of people. I had no idea who, where they were or what they were talking about. They're Thai people. And Thailand gambling is illegal. So I'm going to be quick about this story because I only got three seconds here. They're not supposed to gamble, but they were gambling anyway. And I had the time of my life because I was in an environment of just people really enjoying themselves. And that journey started with my education right here in the school district that I grew up in, Valley High School. I would not have been afforded that opportunity had the school not had Japanese, among other languages offered. I want us to get back to a district that gives our kids the same type of opportunity to go out and explore the world and become the best people they can be. I don't want a strong school. I want to see strong students. Students that come out and can take on the world and get us to a better place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, for your participation and your comments. Fannette Elliott, we'd like to hear from you.
First of all, thank you for the opportunity, giving all of us a chance to share. You know, we spend time, I'm talking amongst our friends and our families and different events of why we want to run for school board and why it's important to us. But it's really kind of refreshing to hear what everyone else has to say. The election will be the election, but I think every individual who's in here right now, they are expressing their concern. They are in it for the children and for the community. So I feel better having the opportunity to listen to what everyone else has to say. Wellbeing, one of the things that I'm concerned about is the wellbeing for the parents, for the teachers. And the reason I say that is that with so much going on, you know, it's to the point though, mentally, these last two years have been extremely challenging. So I'd like to see more of a concern for the children and for the teachers. The teachers are the unsung heroes that everyone seems to forget. We have lots of unsung heroes, but the teachers are really it. I had a teacher who made a difference in my life. She was my sixth grade teacher. She believed in me. She told me I was smart. Sure, I got that from my parents, don't get me wrong, but I also got it from my teacher. I, I'm not going to get emotional because my teacher went on to be a West Des Moines City Council person. And I would love to rub elbows with her right now to tell her how much she's made a difference in my life. But teachers are the source. They're the ones that are helping to grow our generation of critical thinkers, analytical thinkers, creative thinkers, all of that and above. But you owe that to the teachers. So if I say nothing else, I'm in it for the teachers. I want to give them a voice because they are the unsung heroes.
Thank you, Fannette, for your time and your comments. Appreciate it. Okay, Will Jess, your final comments.
All right, I think, I think if we've all been paying attention here, I would hope that the audience has seen kind of what I see too. Every one of us up here is saying the same thing. We all mean the same thing. We all want the same thing. Our differences may come in how we get there and what is maybe the priority of all of the things. But we're all saying the same things and that's a good thing. And Ms. Elliott mentioned that too. It's just, it's great. It's refreshing. I think if I'm elected, I can sit down with any one of these individuals and I feel comfortable that I could sit down. We could have a dialogue. We could find the middle ground and we could find the solution. And that makes me feel better coming into this because I haven't had the opportunity to meet half of you. As for myself, the candidate you're getting, you know, they've always said that if you're the smartest man in the room, you're in the wrong room. And I've never been accused of being in the wrong room. But what I am good at, I am smart enough to be able to find the smart people, to educate me on the pieces that I'm missing. I learn quick on the fly, or I learn on the fly, I learn quick. And I look at the school board position as a simple position with complex things that need to be done. That with the input of the parents and the teachers, it's our job to create an environment that can educate the most kids the most efficiently. And whatever it takes to do that, our job as the board is to listen to the parents and the teachers, to give them the support they need and to maybe write some checks. It's not our job to dictate. This is a community thing. It's not seven people that are making this up. It's a community thing. And that is something that with me, I will strive very hard to facilitate. Thank you.
Thank you, Will, for your comments and for your time. Okay, Anadilia Morgan, your closing comments.
Thank you. I really loved hearing all the comments today. I think that I definitely, if I, if I am chosen or elected to be on the school board, I can sit down and work at the table with anyone. And so it was good to hear the, you know, some similar views. And that was, that was, that was great for me. I just, I wanted to assure that, like, that I am not here for a hot button issue. I am here, elected or not, I am a parent that's involved and I will still be in the district and I will still be, I will still participate in making sure that this district is at the best that it can be to, and making sure that we're continuing to trying to meet goals. I did want to just make sure that I did touch upon also that my, you know, my concern for teachers is also, you know, I know that they're overwhelmed and COVID has not made it easy for them. It's so important to make sure that we are pushing social emotional learning. I know some of other people are concerned about other things, but in order to be a whole person, and that's what students are, whole people, they're people that deserve respect and dignity. And they really have been in a very difficult, they're really going through some difficult times. And then our teachers are really feeling that because they're expected to not only teach math and science and history, they also have to make sure that they're, that they're meeting, you know, their social emotional needs. I just, I want to make sure that, you know, through these, through these types of programs, we are again, building community. We are trying to eliminate bias. We are getting students to use their skills to be able to manage their difficult times. So I, just a big push on mental health and hoping that we are addressing all the needs of teachers, administration, our staff and our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Anadilia, for your time and your comments. Casey Schwartz, your closing comments, Casey.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your time and energy tonight. All the questions in the chat and even the colorful comments and questions. Appreciate all of it. I'm just a mom, you know, that, that's what really got me here. You know, current events may have woke me up and brought me to the table, but at the end of the day, like the others have said, you know, number one focus is on our kids because they're our future of the city, our communities, our state and our country. And that cannot be understated. And so again, through that, that mom lens, I want to be a champion for parents. Because, you know, I haven't done a good job in the past and I know there are many busy parents in the same boat. I want to be more involved in our kids' education and really be a true partner to our wonderful teachers and administrators to hopefully make their job a little easier, but also to make our kids' academic success even greater. And I mentioned a couple of times that focus on academics is so important. And Anadilia mentioned, you know, some critical things as well, mental health and emotional wellbeing. All of that stuff is absolutely important as well. And like I mentioned earlier, I want to be an advocate for teachers, developing a whole new appreciation and just scratching the surface of an understanding of, of all of the things that they do for our kids. And, you know, the extra hours and energy that they put in every day. And so I want to make sure that, you know, as a board member, working with the other board members in the community and parents and families, that we are doing everything we can to attract and retain these awesome teachers who really give it all to our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey, for your comments. Okay, Erin Sewell, closing comments. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, I'll start with, with thanking the chamber, Catherine and her awesome staff for hosting this. Even in a virtual setting, it's been some great conversations, great, great ideas, great perspectives. A lot, a lot to think about, you know, we're all always learning is what we should be doing. And that's why I want to work for every student to make sure they have opportunity. I want to work for every student, make sure they feel safe. I want to work for every student to make sure they feel welcome, make sure their families have access to all that West Des Moines Community Schools has to offer, whether it's academics, athletic or activity based, you know, make sure they really feel connected to their public school system. Make sure our homeschool families that are connected to our school system have access to the programs we provide for them. We have some of the best programming for students who learn at home in, in the metro, in the state, you know, such things I haven't, didn't have when I was growing up homeschooled. We need to make sure that kids have opportunities to find their own success. A test score or a 3.0 GPA doesn't determine whether a child is successful. I left high school with a 2.4 GPA. I got into Simpson College with a 17 ACT. And I just did enough to get through was my motto until I finally found my passion and I worked at it. And I know it's helping others find their passion. That's what I tell my students. I want them to find, you know, their success. They might not do well today on learning a subject. It might take them years to figure it out, but I want them to try. There's going to be teachers that love them and that want them to have the best. And we want to continue being with them along this path and supporting educators that support kids. And we can only do any of this through partnering with families and with parents who know these kids the best. You know, and moving our district forward to be, to be great, to keep welcoming families to West Des Moines. They want to know that to Clive, to Herpendale, to Windsor Heights. They want to know their kids have a good school system to grow up and succeed in. So we need to partner with our families, partner with these parents and continue loving all these students that come in and make sure everyone feels welcome and feels like they can find their success and be lifelong learners. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Erin. Thank you, Erin. Okay, Lila Starr, thank you so much for your time. We're excited to hear your comments.
Thank you. I've learned a great deal about the need for parental involvement and advocacy in a child's education. I've learned that through my own experiences as a parent for my two amazing young men. And I've learned that through my work as a social worker and a mental health specialist. And I believe deeply that parents have to be involved in everything that happens. However, I also believe that school boards have to set the educational strategy and goals. And then administrations have to implement those goals and strategies. And they have to do that by supporting the teachers, supporting the curriculum, following the laws, implementing all the things that keep us in compliance and help us draw down the most dollars that we can. And I want to be a part of all of that. I have been, I moved here because of great schools some 24 years ago. I have been as passionate an advocate as I can think of for our schools. I want to continue to do that. I believe I have the time to do that now during the end of my career and with my children already launched into the world. And I believe that I will bring all of my own experiences with great teachers and my children's experiences with great teachers and administrators in this district to the job. And I hope that she'll let me do it. I hope that she'll vote for me on November 2nd or sooner, if you're voting early. And I really look forward to the opportunity to represent all of you.
Thank you, Lila, and thank you to all of our candidates. Your reflections is fabulous. I applaud you, as Nick Callison said in the chat here, and I'll echo his comments and sentiments. You're all saints in this, running in this environment, wishing you all the best. I know how hard this is. This is a non-paid position. You do this from the bottom of your heart. You do this because you care, right? So thank you for caring. Thank you for caring about our kids, our teachers, our district, our community. We all appreciate it from the bottom of our hearts. So I've got a fun little quote I'm going to leave you with. Education is the most powerful weapon to make a difference. And West Des Moines is a strong, strong school district. And all of you all are going to make it stronger. And we just really appreciate everybody's time. Thank you to our audience today. And good luck. Good luck to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you guys. Appreciate it.